We are actually having this considered a special call meeting for the Rockcastle County Board of Education because we're meeting on a different night than we normally do. So the way, or the way the law states is the only thing that we can really do is what is on our agenda. But the highlight for this evening is all of our kiddos that are here. So we are so glad that our parents and our children are here with us tonight. It makes Christmas time even better seeing your faces. But the first thing I would like to do is to call this meeting to order. And the first thing on our agenda tonight is a moment of silent prayer. Item one B is a roll call. All of our board members are present either here or on the phone. Ms. Anna is coming in from somewhere else, so. Item one C is a reading of board team commitments. Would anyone like to do that tonight?
Do that.
Oh, thank you, Matt.
To improve our effectiveness, the board team for Rockcastle County Schools commits to review processes and experiences to identify and direct improvements. Continuously define and work toward long-term goals that serve all students of the district. Make each decision based on facts and the best for all students. Listen to each other and speak freely. Work together, support each other, and not surprise one another. Discuss board deliberations to point a mutually agreeable resolution based on factual information. Support the majority's decision projecting board unity towards shared goals for continuously improving district-wide student learning. Operate without personal or political agendas. Respect one another, agree to disagree respectfully. Delegate implementation to superintendent and education team and respectfully remind each other of these commitments.
Thank you. Item two is adopt the agenda. The agenda will be as is. I need a motion to adopt that.
So moved.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Anna.
Item three is public comment. Yes, Carrie, nothing is scheduled for tonight? Okay, so item four is our school and our community showcase. And the first thing on our list, Mr. Nick Williams, would you like to come and tell us who you brought with you today?
Yeah, but he told you all for bringing and having your kids allow them to participate tonight. With us brought Ms. Kim Woolhams, who is our music teacher at Broadhead Elementary. And then we have some of our second, third grade teachers here with this. An over the past was it been about a month, Ms. Kim? They've been working on putting together a little Christmas show for you all, a spread little Christmas cheer going into the holiday season. So Ms. Kim, I'll turn it over to you and the kiddos.
We just have a couple of songs prepared about reindeer.
Yeah, I don't know. Very sorry.
Thanks to all the family.
Thank you. You can say it if you want. Ms. Anna, so I know you all got a busy agenda going on tonight. With all due respect for the board's time, but as Brandon's getting pulled up here. I did want to take, take an opportunity to just kind of share with the board some mid-year progress that Broadhead Elementary has been making in terms of student achievement. As you know, this week we're fishing up our winter I read diagnostic not fat opportunity. I don't know, it's become a principle. It's kind of turned me into a little bit of a data nerd. Just a little bit. So I look at it probably an unhealthy amount. But I've been diving into that, breaking it down. And I've seen a little presentation, a little short presentation of Brandon that whenever it gets pulled up, I'll just go through briefly with you all. So here we go. It's just a little five slide presentation with some pictures here. So this is our entire school kindergarten through fifth grade students tested, and this is in the subject of reading. So there in the bottom, it's kind of faded out. You can see where we were in the fall. We took that diagnostic probably a week and a half or two weeks into the school year. Then you can see where we're at the winter. You'll, I think the big thing that immediately stood out to me is that you notice the green is growing, the red is shrinking. And even the yellow shrinking, which is, is, which is tremendous. If we wanted to break what you see down there into state testing terms of novice apprentice proficient distinguished. That striped green is going to be your distinguished scores and, or your very, very, very high proficient scores knocking on the door of distinguished within a point or two. The solid green is going to be all proficient. And then when you get into that yellow there, the probably the first little part of the upper, the upper, I would say fourth of that yellow is going to be kids that still follow. Would be classified as proficient. That's going to follow into that being above the 50th percentile on there. So that, that is just tremendous growth that I'm really, really happy about. And in the subject of reading, breaking that down, I did, did the numbers today. Right now currently in with our third through fifth grade students, then I'll show you a little bit. We're setting at 55% proficient P and D. On that, which, which is growth up from high thirties in the fall. So tremendous growth that we're seeing there. Then in math, once again, kind of the same trend that you see there, that the green is growing, the red is shrinking and what, and this is what really stands out to me is looking at that red. And last year, when you looked at our student achievement, writing was our greatest area for growth and math was second. And now, as you'll see as I go through this, math is becoming a strength. So we've been able to really flip that or in just the first few months of the school year there. And with both of them and reading math, something that stands out to me is with that yellow is look at how much meat's still on the bone for growth there going into the, the spring semester. Just a ton of kids that are just knocking, knocking on the door, being to be on grade level or above. So just really proud of all our students and all the hard work and stuff that they're doing. So with those, how does this, you know, right now, let's just say theoretically KSA is next week. You know, where, where are we at? How's that break down into our, our state metrics there? What this chart that you're seeing here is only taking in our third through fifth grade students. So that, that 194 that you see, there's our third through fifth grade students. And that chart is Mr. Thomas Coffey every year shares the KSA Accountability Calculator with principals. So this is a state accountability calculator that all principals in the district have access to use as a resource. So I just went through and I put in our numbers. That, that is not percent of kids. That is actual number of kids that are at each level. So just looking at reading first, you can see there that our reading indicator currently is at 70.7. That is green. That, that, that is, that is solid green there. Math matters to 77.1. Science is 75.4, social studies 72.6, and combined writing 77.4. I will say with reading and math, those, that is actual I read diagnostic numbers that I pulled. Now with science, what I did is I spoke with Ms. Avery Reynolds, our fourth grade science teacher, and I said, give me a mid-year projection. I'm like, you can even low ball it if you want. Give me, give me a mid-year projection based on what you're seeing with your kids. And she's doing some of her own diagnostic work. Where we don't have science with I read, or I read of science. And that's what she shared, shared there with me for that. So just tremendous growth. Social studies, social studies and reading, I've found historically is very comparable in, in terms of the state achievement. So I put in those numbers are actually our fifth grade reading scores. I mean, it's going to be last year on our state assessment. I mean, it was within a indicator point or two. So it's right there in that, in that ballpark, give or, give or take. And then our writing scores, I asked Mr. Steven Rainer, who's teaching our fifth grade writing to just share with it. Share with me kind of what he thought, once again, a projection. And all, and all my teachers said that, you know, this is what we're sharing with you right now. If that's what is at the end of the year, we'd be disappointed that that's how much they believe in kids. And what really stands out to me there is every single one of those indicator scores, that, that is true student or student achievement. There's no growth in there. That is straight student achievement, no accommodations. So any of our students who receive special education services, they, they, I read is designed to not get accommodations for that, to just get a true. Level without any sort of accommodations. That is no accommodations. So I would anticipate that being the absolute floor at this point in the year where we're at.
What have you done differently, like noticing your math scores? What have you, what have you implemented differently to bring it up?
Well, I mean, the process we've been following, just, you know, last year we started diving in to the standards and just getting really focused on that kind of. I've kind of broken down what we're trying to do at Broadhead in their three-tier process. And what I told teachers last, last year was back to the basics. Let's just get back, you know, during COVID, everybody went into survival mode fearfully and for some literally speaking. You know, let's just get focused back on what good educational process looks like and looking at standards. So and we took in that even deeper this year. With our PLCs that we do weekly. So just continuing to dive into our standards and what, what is truly on grade level. What does this standard expect a kid to know and not, and you know, focusing on teaching to the standard, not the topic, not a unit. Another thing like a thing that we've done in school, our fourth and fifth grade, I departmentalized this year. I think if you ask every one of my fourth and fifth grade teachers, they would tell you that they are teaching a subject that they feel is their strength and that they are passionate about. And to me, that is very powerful. And it shrinks that standard amount. You know, I learned quickly new to elementary. I mean, if you're teaching a subject, you're expected for almost 100 standards. I mean, if you're teaching a subject, you're expected for almost 100 standards. I mean, that's a lot. If you can shrink that down to 20, and say, "I want you to master those and know them in and out," I think that, I think there's a lot of opportunity there for growth. Then something that's really stood out to me too, that I presented to teachers, is that accountability factor. You know, getting kids, bringing kids in to the process, involving them in their learning, and then pushing them, and inspiring kids, and just the power of motivation and inspiring them. I mean, if you, you can be, we've got wonderful teachers, absolutely wonderful teachers at our school, but if we don't inspire them and motivate them to be their absolute best every day, we're not going to get everything out of them. We're not. And that's true for me as well. That's true for me as an adult, not just kids. So where's this break down here? So this is another part of the calculation. So when you combine our reading and math indicators, that gives us a current status score of 73.9. Status score is straight achievement. That is straight achievement on there. You look above that, the 64.9 was where we were at last year. And then right above that, the change difference is the growth factor that came in with this past school year. So a plus nine, whoever we add the nine to 73.9, that gives us an indicator score of 82.9 in reading and math. That is .1% away from blue. 82.9. Our science, social studies, and combined writing with current status of 75.1. Last year we were 55.2. I mean, just tons of points there. We're at a 95 with that. I mean, you're talking, well, I'll show you on the next slide, that number, if you're breaking down like last year's numbers, we're talking top 20 in the state right there, out of 720 elementary schools. So our students and our teachers are putting in the work, and I'm just extremely, extremely proud of it. For the quality and climate, I just left that same. Just for factoring stuff, left at 80.3. But if you're looking at top right-hand corner, right now, overall, we are projected to have an indicator score of 87.9. And that's why I highlighted the back slide blue, because it takes an 83 to get blue. And so, right now, and I don't, unless something crazy, unforeseen happens, and I don't anticipate, we're going to keep pushing, our teachers are focused, our kids are focused, I anticipate Broadhead Elementary being a blue school next year, and skipping green and just going from yellow to blue, like that. And that is, all the credit goes to our students and staff, because they work tirelessly. And what I've told them, is I'll share this with them tomorrow, I've only shared this with our site base yesterday, and now you all and everybody else in the room, but this is validation. This is validation, that for all the hard work we've been doing, we've not been spinning our wheels just in mud and not going nowhere. That it will work, just stay with the process, and we're going to see wonderful stuff. It's coming. And then this last thing here, you can see the top two, we were 69.7 last year, yellow. We actually went up .4 points, but, you know, the rest of the state, you know, saw more growth. So we maintained, but as the rest of the state showed growth, we actually fell back almost a little over 100 spots in state rankings. We were 433 of 720 with that. But I did share down there with you at the bottom, so I looked at the state rankings. To be a top 100 school, this is based on last year. I don't know how it'll shake out, I'm sure it's going to be about the same, because you're going to have some schools show growth, some that maintain, I mean, it's every year. But last year, an indicator score of, an overall indicator of 84.6 will get you the top 100 in state. A 90.6 will get you into the top 50, and a 95.5 will get you in the top 25. Before I actually crunched all these numbers, I was going around telling teachers that, "Hey, we need to reevaluate our goals. We need to be looking at top 100." Coming to a school, you're willing to be green. I'm like, "Ah, that's selling us, we're selling ourselves short if we do that." And then I started crunching the numbers, and now I've got my eyes on top 50, or better. I mean, that's where we're at, and our teachers are really, really focused on that and excited about it. Our kids are excited about it. So, once again, all the credit to them. They worked tirelessly, couldn't be more proud of all our staff and students.
What is your current enrollment?
Little over 490, little over 490. Yeah, well, we ended the school year last year at 512, but we did have several students that moved, so we're, it's a little over 490, yeah. And 2490, 495.
Sounds to me like Broadhead is the place to be.
I'm proud. I mean, I'm very proud, and I'm not going to lie, I text Mr. Rufford, I wouldn't tell Miss Carey in advance, because I knew this wasn't a bad surprise. I knew this wasn't a bad surprise, but I text Mr. Rufford, and I've been chomping at the bit to share this with you all, just because I wanted the opportunity to publicly praise my staff and students for everything that they do. They're incredible, and they've been a blessing to me.
Well, Mr. Rufford kept your secret.
I did give you the look that day at the meeting.
But I want to say thank you to you, because without your leadership, we would not be here. And you have worked tirelessly yourself, and coming from a middle school background, you have come into elementary school, and you have learned the elementary way, and you've dug into standards, and you've motivated teachers, you're motivating kids, you're studying, you're learning, you're working hard. And just from the bottom of my heart, I say thank you for our kids, because our kids deserve this. And I appreciate the work you're putting in to lead and guide them.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Every time you come back, Mr. Williams, we expect children to come here. It was wonderful seeing them tonight.
Thank you for coming.
It's going to be hard to beat that, Miss Carey.
I know, that was pretty great.
For the staff recognition of upholding the core values of Rockcastle County Schools.
Yes, so of course, this is also our, this is the second month we've done this, and we're even bigger than, better than last month, because it's, once you start recognizing people for the good that they're doing in our school district, it's just so easy to see. It just spreads, and it grows, and you just see. And if you look around, it's amazing. You take time to really look around at everybody that is so dedicated to our schools, and that exemplify our values, and just how much we appreciate them. So I'm honored to be able to say thank you, and I wish we were doing more than a certificate, but just saying, gosh, you're just such a part of our family, and thank you for what you do, and we're just so, so, so appreciative. And our staff is what makes Rockcastle County Schools great. So we had a couple people that were not able to join us this evening because they had some prayer commitments. So we'll go through these, and if you'll do this, and I'll do this side part. So, Ms. Betty Holt is representing the Rockcastle County Academy. She's not here this evening, but she was recognized by the staff there for her commitment to Rockcastle County Schools. So Ms. Betty does a great job working with our students and their parents and guardians on a daily basis. She always makes sure our students have anything they need while at school. She is also in constant communication with her guardians. Ms. Betty keeps that line of communication open, so each family is comfortable reaching out when a need arises. She wants to make sure our school is working with each individual family to meet the needs of our students. So Ms. Betty Holt nominated for commitment. Ms. Vicki Castle is representing our vocational school, and she was nominated for her dedication to teamwork. Ms. Vicki, come on up, don't be shy. Ms. Castle's involvement as an advisor for FBLA, leader in the RATC's PLC group, and leadership in the Business Technology Advisory Committee are key examples of her opportunities to demonstrate teamwork. So Ms. Vicki Castle, Okay, nominated for commitment is Ms. Brianna Adams. I don't think Ms. Brianna was able to join us this evening, but Ms. Brianna is a true leader at Broadhead Elementary, and she serves on the SBDM Council, and has been the academic team coach for several years. Ms. Brianna is dedicated professional who devotes countless hours to ensuring her students receive a high-quality education. Additionally, she is always willing to do anything to help our whole school be as successful as possible. So Mr. Nick, you want to come up and accept And Ms. Stephanie Hurst, also here for commitment this evening, and she's representing Brownstone. Yep, I mean, Ms. Stephanie was here earlier in a different meeting, so I understand why she's here for commitment. Ms. Hurst is willing to take on whatever role is needed to help the students of Brownstone Elementary. She is a master teacher, a phenomenal interventionist, a support for other staff members, and an integral part of our administrative team. Ms. Hurst even keeps our landscape in tip-top shape. There are few professionals as committed to the success of their school like Mrs. Stephanie Hurst. So congratulations. Teamwork again, I'm seeing a theme here in this value. Ms. Brittany Adams, come on up, Ms. Brittany. Ms. Brittany spends so much of her free time helping the students and staff of Rockcastle County Middle School. She planned, organized, and executed our first rocket rally, which was a huge success. She sponsors KYA, coaches the archery team, and is a fantastic classroom teacher. Whenever asked to do anything, Ms. Brittany is always willing to help make RCMS a better place for everyone. Ms. Brittany Adams. Ms. Morgan Taylor was nominated by the high school for the value of respect. Ms. Morgan Taylor exemplifies Rockcastle County High School's core values by developing a mutual respect with her students and colleagues each year at RCHS. The expectations she sets in her classroom drive her chemistry students to reach lofty goals and prepare them for post-secondary success. RCHS AP chemistry students reach the highest percentage of pass rate for the AP exam in RCHS history, thanks to Mrs. Taylor's hard work and dedication. Ms. Morgan Taylor. Commitment, Ms. Robin Bowman, representing Mount Vernon Elementary School. Ms. Robin has served willingly on the superintendent advisory committee for several years, which requires her not only to give of her own time, but also to do additional things during the school day. As part of her commitment to represent Mount Vernon Elementary in this role, she talks with all staff members about various concerns, so she can best convey the thoughts and ideas of the staff. Additionally, I have seen her commitment to learning new programs, skills, in order to improve reading and math instruction, as well as sharing her expertise with other staff members. She is very committed to doing what's best for her students by going above and beyond in her communication with administration, counselors, and other staff members, to make sure all barriers are removed that would hamper a student's academic progress. Ms. Robin Bowman. Okay, Mr. Bobby Dees was nominated from our transportation staff due to his commitment to Rockcastle County Schools. Mr. Bobby Dees is one of Rockcastle County Schools' committed special needs bus drivers. Mr. Dees works hard daily to ensure that our special needs students have a safe trip to and from school. This month, we would like to recognize him for stepping up to support our community during the recent train derailment. Mr. Bobby So all of our bus drivers that are here tonight that are being recognized, I just want to take just a moment and personally thank them. As you all know, in Livingston, the train derailment, and it was necessary to evacuate people from Livingston to RCMS Gym, we were just like, "Oh, how are we going to do that?"
Can I say one thing, Miss Carey?
Yes, you speak away.
This was a privilege to be able to do this. I picked up a man that lived in apartments and brought him up to school that night, and the next day, he ended up going to motel and getting him and bringing him for the dinner. And there was a lady there, and another man that rode my bus up to the middle school, and she was a recovering drug addict. And we were sitting there talking in the bus before we left, and she said, "You know, we need to thank God for this disaster that happened." And I said, "Well, you're right." I said, "It's like Romans 8:28 says." And so we were talking, and afterwards, when we started back to the motel, she said, "You know what? This is the best Thanksgiving I've ever had. I'll never forget this." It made me stop and think just how much stuff that we all, including myself, take for granted. And it was really a privilege to be able to do this for the citizens of Rockcastle County. And I thank Miss Carey for stepping up all the effort that she did. She was wonderful.
We thank you all, all bus drivers that did this. And I kept calling Mr. Bobby and saying, "Mr. Bobby, we need a bus again." And it was Thanksgiving, you know, and the day before, and Thanksgiving Day, and the day after, and I kept calling him, because that special needs bus, there was a need for that. We didn't have any other transportation. And he was always so willing. He was just, "I'll be right there. Where do you need me? I'll be there as quick as I can." And I just don't know how much that means to us as a Rockcastle County team, to know that everybody's here to serve. And so thank you all, everybody. Okay, commitment again, another Rockcastle County School bus driver. Ms. French is a veteran bus driver and a midday preschool driver for Rockcastle County Schools. She greets every student with a smile, and I know she always greets me with a smile too. She is always going out of her way for the students of Rockcastle County, and we are blessed to have her on the transportation team. This month, we would like to recognize her for stepping up to support our community during the recent train derailment. And I will say, she called me and said, "Is it true that they need buses at Livingston?" And I said, "Hang on, I don't know. I don't know that." And so I had to call, I called the sheriff's and I said, "I've got a bus driver that's ready to come. What do you need?" And he said, "We need buses. I need five." And she was able to start organizing that and getting that going for us. So thank you so much. We appreciate you. Okay, Mr. Bobby French is another one of our very committed bus drivers and midday preschool driver with Rockcastle County Schools. Mr. French has worked with our district for several years and is always willing to lend an extra hand when needed. If you all keep hearing this, all these people are willing to jump in and help whenever needed. And this month, again, we'd like to recognize Mr. Bobby French for stepping up to support our community during the train derailment. Mr. Bobby, thank you. Hey, Mr. Herschel Callahan is a substitute bus driver for Rockcastle County Schools. Mr. Callahan ensures that all of his students are treated with kindness and have a safe trip to and from school each day. This month, we would like to recognize him for stepping up to support our community during the recent train derailment. So it's not only our full-time people that are committed, but it's also our substitutes, and how meaningful is that? So thank you. Ms. Rosemary Salsworth is also nominated this month for commitment. Ms. Rosemary is another one of our committed bus drivers and midday preschool driver within the district. Ms. Rosemary's students look forward to seeing her every day as they travel to and from school. We would like to also recognize her for her support during the train derailment. Ms. Rosemary and her husband were also, had to evacuate their own home, so they were staying in a hotel, but willing to step up and help us and transport people.
Like I said, look at the four walls.
So she was displaced, but that didn't stop her from being willing and committed to helping and volunteering her time. So thank you all. And Ms. Carolyn Holt. Ms. Carolyn is another one of our amazing bus drivers and midday preschool driver for Rockcastle County Schools. Ms. Holt always greets her students with a smile and is committed to ensuring each of her students has a safe trip to and from school daily. This month, we would like to recognize her for stepping up for our community during the train derailment. And Ms. Carolyn, you've probably never had so much food on a bus before, I don't say. So she went to Cracker Barrel, she took her bus to Cracker Barrel, and picked up all the food for the Thanksgiving dinners, and drove it back to school, and we unloaded from her bus. And I will say, I've never, I didn't know you could get that much food on a school bus. But, so Ms. Carolyn Holt, thank you. Something else I'll say, Ms. Carolyn, she drove her bus, and Cole, who is now 22, he notoriously left his coat on the bus, and, or left something, and, you know, Ms. Carolyn, instead of just, she would take it home and wash it and be ready. So I appreciate you very, very much. Mr. Brett Noble, is Brett here tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, you were hiding from him, Brett's coming out. Mr. Brett is the lead mechanic for Rockcastle County Schools. Mr. Noble works diligently to keep all of our buses in top-notch condition, along with being willing to drive himself when needed. And we would also like to recognize him for his support during the train derailment. And Brett was awesome. Mr. Ken was out of town, and that was nerve-wracking, but I kept telling him, "Quit worrying, Brett's got it, got this under control." So he did all the organizing and helping, and we very much appreciate you. Yes, we would like to get a picture of all of you. If you all want to come down here in front of this bookcase, that might be an easier slide. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, if you would like. And I understand if you do not want to. Before Ms. Stephanie Hurst, please, has she already left? I just wanted-
She has a Christmas party to get back to.
Oh, does she? I just wanted to say, since I've served on the board, there have been numerous times that her name has come up. Of her commitment and dedication. Ms. Hurst, I just wanted to say, for as long as I've served on this board, over and over again, your name has come up for your relent, your dedication and your commitment to our kids. And it's because of individuals like you that Mr. Williams and all these others can brag on their students. So, you know, I appreciate everyone, but I just wanted to say, your face, you know, you're just somebody that has come to attention many times.
I consider it an honor and calling on my life to be where I've been placed at Rockcastle County Schools. Well, I appreciate you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Hey, our crowd is dwindling. Y'all are welcome to move.
Got some breathing room.
So, item 4C is CNTA, Rockcastle County Schools' Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract Year Two Measurement and Verification. Welcome.
Hi. I just want to say how needed is that you recognize the people in your school system. My dad's a bus driver for Union County Schools in Western Kentucky. So, I can see my dad standing up over there, all the things that he does, I have no idea about. So, it's pretty special. My name's Preston French. I'm an engineer with CNTA. With us tonight, we also have Tim Hockit Smith. He is our client relations. And Jerry Hammack, he was our construction manager for this project. Thank you all for letting us come speak tonight and share with you some of the results of the Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract that you all made with us, or the renovations that we had the last couple of years. So, this is the year two measurement verification. We had a year one, and we didn't do a presentation last year because we hadn't quite finished all the work that we had. The first construction year was focused on lighting and solar at Rockcastle High School. And then, the second year construction was focused on renovating Mount Vernon Elementary School. But before I get too deep into the presentation, I would like to give a moment to, you can, to Brian Mason. So, he was the project manager on this project. For those of you who knew him, he was a really great man. I know for myself, he was a mentor for me, and he made an impact on everybody he met. But he was the project manager on this job. And as we got into our second summer of construction, he actually found out he had cancer and he passed away earlier this year. So, I just want to give him a moment. And he's not here physically with us here tonight, but he's here in his presentation. He put in a lot of hard work for this project, and he deserves to share in this good news. So, I just want to honor him.
He really became a friend of Rockcastle County Schools.
Very easygoing.
We create room to appreciate him and call him our friend. So, thank you for being there.
So, a little refresher on what a guaranteed energy savings contract is. So, you know, our goal with every project is to give you the project that you all want. And we utilize this method as a budget-neutral approach. So, we use your existing operations budget, and we look at your existing utility cost and your maintenance cost, and we find ways to save energy, but also renovate your existing buildings. And throughout this project, we did a lot of things. But through these renovations, we're going to save you energy and not expand your operations budget at all. And oftentimes, when we do this, do these projects, we will often see excess savings, which are 100% retained by you all. So, like I said, to paint the picture, you all spend money every year on your utility cost. And before you do a project, that money is going straight to the utility company. And you've got aging infrastructure that has very important needs. And through this project, we're able to address those needs. And we want to move some of that money away from the utility company by saving energy in order to reinvest back in your all schools. And those are just some example pictures of some highlighted areas. And through, you know, this overall project summary, we're able to do a 100% LED lighting approach, where we actually replace over 10,000 lights. This project came about during COVID. So, one focus of this project was to address indoor air quality upgrades. And a big focus of this project was during the renovation of Mount Vernon Elementary School, where we were able to completely replace your HVAC system and put in a brand-new, highly-efficient water-source heat pump system that is operating very, very well. And throughout this project, we also were able to replace your data and fire protection at this building, which I know is a big focus for Trent, and find some nice energy savings mechanisms, such as, you know, a utility rate change at Mount Vernon Elementary that was putting you on a more advantageous rate with KU, and also installing a 100 KW solar array at your high school. So, the goal for this project was to find, you know, $125,000 of annual guaranteed energy savings in the first year. And additionally, we were able to take advantage of $73,000 of utility rebates from KU. So, that was just extra money that we were able to find because of the energy savings features that we had for this project, such as replacing your lighting. So, you know, a picture on the left is some of the older equipment that was a big focus for this project. You know, a picture on the bottom left kind of tells a story. I'm sure Trent could tell you his thoughts on that system before this project. But it only had a couple of years left, probably, but it was original to the building. It was your fluid cooler that was about 30 years old. And, you know, we were able to not only take care of that, but also drastically improve your indoor air quality with a dedicated outside air system with energy recovery, and install brand-new, highly-efficient water-source heat pumps that were a lot smaller and cleaned up the space. So, sorry, go back. One click. Oh, that's okay. And the top right was an example of how we were also able to install a new building automation system that helped you do highly-efficient HVAC controls. So, yeah, you can click that. But there's, basically, now you're able to remotely monitor the operation of your school building, and that's helpful for Trent, but also for energy savings. And you can go ahead and click again. I go back a couple of times. One more. Hit the bottom right is the video. For the, there you go. So, at Rockcastle High School, we took your existing building and did a few things. Luckily, Jerry's very, very, very good at using his drone. So, he took a couple of drone shots of the high school for the solar panels on the roof. But like I said, you know, this was 100% LED lighting approach. And there are some companies out there that want to tackle the low-hanging fruit. But, you know, we really wanted to address some maintenance needs that you all had. And this is an example of your flagpole light in front of the high school. When we came on to this project, it was flooded. It wasn't watertight. So, I really don't know the last time that that flagpole light worked. And this wasn't necessarily a payback item. This was, probably cost more than the energy savings you're going to see. But Jerry was able to figure out a really good solution for this. And to my knowledge, it's still working great and watertight. And that's just a small example of little things that we like to do just to make, you know, life easier for you all. The bottom left is a trend graph of your cafeteria temperatures at Rockcastle High School. And this kind of paints a story of how we like to schedule your building. So, the thought is, why run your HVAC equipment when nobody's there? You all recently, you know, four or five years ago, did an equipment renovation at that school and a new control system, but it just didn't quite have all the kinks worked out. And one thing that we did was to make sure that that equipment was running when students were there, but also would set back during the weekends. So, that yellow line in the middle is actually like the temperature in the cafeteria. So, you can see where during the week, you're staying in a comfortable area, but then on the weekends, you know, it kind of drifts. And that's just a small story of how we're able to use your existing system to get some really good savings. So, here's some other examples of existing lighting across your school district. And we did this to all your schools and your admin buildings, and you hit the next slide. But, you know, we're not only trying to achieve energy savings, we're trying to reduce maintenance for Trent and his team, but also increase light levels. And you can see the drastic difference in the middle school and the upper right-hand corner. Now, that gym is really cool. It's historic. It's got wood beams straight across. But it was slightly underlit before the project, but we were really able to bring the light levels up in that area. So, it made it a really cool space. So, you know, we've seen some examples of things that we're able to upgrade. And additionally, with our measurement and verification, we have a team who actually record all of your energy bills every single month for all of your accounts for every building. So, it's a process for us to make sure that we are guaranteeing the savings, or that we are achieving the savings we guarantee. So, this is a, there's a couple of different ways to build on electricity. There's KWH, which is what you typically see at your home. That's how you build. And on the next slide is KW, and go back one more. The KWH piece of this is called electric usage or consumption. And you're able to see a 31% reduction of your electricity usage before and after this project, which is a really, really large drastic reduction. And it's something to really be proud about. And the next slide for KW, this is for Mount Vernon Elementary School with the rate change that we saw. We were able to reduce that electric demand, which is building KW by 15%. And you'll see where the first four or five months, we're kind of tracking alongside each other what the actual KW was compared to your baseline before the project. And that was a result of, you know, we do continuous commissioning, and we make sure the system is operating the way that we expect it to after construction's finished. And you can see where around March, we kind of figured out all the kinks, and you can see where your KW dropped quite a bit. So, I expect for next year, that number to be a lot better for you to see more savings on that. So, this chart is helping you understand what your energy reduction was by building. In our industry, we use a term called EUI. It stands for electric, or energy usage intensity. So, it helps you understand on a per-square-foot basis how all your buildings are operating compared to each other. And the big thing to notice here is the percent energy reduction from the red graph to the green graph. And Mount Vernon Elementary School's performance very, very well. It dropped by 60% from the baseline to how it's actually operating now, with Rockcastle High School being right behind it. But you're able to see a drastic energy reduction across the board. The reason why those two schools are so much, had such a larger reduction was because we were able to address, you know, your equipment replacement, but also the HVAC building automation system. We were able to give you a state-of-the-art system. Another graph that was good to look at was this dollar per square foot comparison. So, we were able to see what your cost is per square foot for all your school buildings. And you can see again where the baseline was higher than the post-construction piece. And the largest drop was for the high school and for Mount Vernon Elementary School. The other buildings that don't have as much of a drop is because we mostly did LED lighting replacements there. But, you know, if you all do renovation in the future, Broadhead or Roundstone, you'll see a bigger drop there too, because, you know, there's other ways to save energy with like building automation and replacing your equipment. So, really, really great cost reduction there. Lastly, so, this is kind of interesting. You can actually get your buildings Energy Star certified, just like you can your washer machine or your dishwasher. Your buildings can be Energy Star certified. And this is a way to basically compare your buildings to every other building in the country. And what's really neat about this is that you're competing against not only the existing buildings out there, but all the brand-new buildings. So, the fact that you have four buildings that are 30-plus years old and that made this list is a huge accomplishment. And for instance, Mount Vernon Elementary School is in the 95th percentile for energy efficiency and sustainability. So, that's something really, that you should really hang your hat on. It's very impressive. We did have four buildings that didn't quite meet the Energy Star certification. You have to reach a level of 75 or higher. And like I said, those are buildings that we did LED lighting. So, they reduced energy, but just not as much to get certified. And we actually brought some of the certificates for you guys. And I'll just show you an example for the four buildings that are certified. But, you know, you can mount that in your school and show it off to your students, senior staff, your community. And it's just a really great way to show your commitment to, you know, energy savings, sustainability, and being good stewards to your community. So, we can give that to you guys afterwards. And lastly, we have the most important piece, which is the cost savings. So, what did we guarantee in year two, and what were the actual savings that you saw? So, what goes into your savings is electricity savings, the utility rebates that we were able to see in year two, and also operational maintenance savings, such as, you know, for your LED lighting, you have less maintenance because they're LED and they last longer. So, your year-two cost savings are $246,000. Your year-two guarantee in the middle piece was $156,000. So, that's what we guaranteed for this project. So, since the savings were so much higher than the guaranteed energy savings, that results in excess savings. And a really cool piece of a guaranteed energy savings contract is that you all get to keep all of that money. We don't see a dime of it. And in any way that you go above and beyond a guarantee, you know, that stays within your all's budget. And, you know, that's what we want to deliver for you guys. And then, the bottom piece, we didn't do this last year, but we sent the report for year one. We keep track from year to year, what the total cost savings is for the project. And, you know, we have so far guaranteed $326,000, and you can see the total excess of $235,000. That first year was a lot higher, because that was the first year we could apply for utility rebates, things like that. But, yeah, things were going well. So, just thank you all for letting us come here tonight and show off how awesome your school district's operating. A huge thank you to Dr. Ballander and Jenny and Trent for all the trust that you gave us and the hard work that you put in to make this project a reality. And another thank you to Trent. You know, it wasn't a complete hands-off approach. You helped us all along the way to figure out the best design for these buildings, and you met with us for construction update reports. And, you know, your maintenance team was there if we screwed something up, and we hit the-- So, it's a team effort all the way. We can't achieve this kind of project without your all's commitment. And, yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, yes. We appreciate the work that you all have done for us and the savings that you've helped us realize. And we appreciate Jerry and Tim, and appreciate your partnership very much. I think Mount Vernon was sad to see Jerry leave.
They probably still catch you on speed dial.
I still hang around.
Next year, if we come back in December for this presentation, I'm going to bring antlers for Jerry to wear.
Jerry's a musician, so he's--
Do some jingles.
Yeah, thank you. Merry Christmas.
One thing I'll say for these guys is a major part of their sales pitch, you've got to remember that, is that once the project's over, they're not going to leave us. And they have certainly not left us. If I need anything above and beyond being a resource, they'll come work on it. Jerry stopped the other day, helped me at the high school. We had a drive that was out, and we figured it out and got it fixed and probably saved a $1,000, $1,500 service call for another company. So, they went above and beyond, all of them. So--
Go ahead, flip it this or give it to Trent?
Yep.
Give it to Trent when I can't put him up.
I'm sorry. Said you're off tomorrow, right?
I'll get a phone call tomorrow.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always good to hear savings.
So item five on our agenda tonight is operations and actions. I didn't have any questions myself. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Ballinger?
I move to first.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Item six A is review and approve the monthly financial reports. Uh, Ms. Jenny, is there anything that stood out that you feel like you should share?
Yes. Um, you'll see a, an increase in fund one for this month and that is the, the result of our local tax, um, collections. We received our first payment, um, from the sheriff's office and that payment was one million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Um, once we receive our payment, um, this month, next month, you'll see that we'll do a transfer to our building fund, um, to choose for debt service and for, for our payments for our project. So, um, we'll talk about that and revisit that again next month. But are there any questions that you have, um, on the financial reports?
Anyone have any questions, Ms. Jenny? Thank you, Ms. Jenny. Need a motion to approve the monthly financial reports?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? Item six B, review and approve the KSBA policy change draft for disposal of school property. This is the second reading. Does anyone have any questions for this? If not, I need a motion to approve.
I'll move.
We have a first and a second?
Yep.
All in favor? Item sixteen, sorry, Anna. Item sixteen, review and approve the year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three audit. And this is always something I usually have few questions. Maybe I won't this year, so that's good. Thank you very much.
Uh, thanks for, for bringing us back for a third year with you guys. Um, we have fourteen school districts that have been issued. Rock Castle is always one of the best that we do, uh, getting off the best as far as in, in terms of the, uh, being provided certain information that is actually good, information that you'll get it, uh, having to be on my side. I think we were due it two days, something like that. So, uh, things are simple for us here anyways. Um, so in your all's audit, uh, it's at June thirty, twenty twenty-three, one hour in December. Uh, they were due November fifteenth. Uh, so this one was, this has been a long time, which is what we always do anyways. But, um, so with your all's financial audit, um, there's actually three audits in here. Uh, it's kind of a strange field I always go through with you. But, uh, the first part of the audit, uh, is called the, the financial statement audit. What that audit is trying to do is to see if your all's special statements are presented, uh, in a, in a materially correct fashion anyway. So, um, with that report, there's three opinions that we can give. Uh, the first opinion is, um, uh, um, the unmodified opinion, which is what the school district received. Uh, sometimes that is also called a clean opinion, which basically means the financial statements that, that are provided to the board throughout the year and to us as, uh, um, as the audit ver, uh, were correct. So whenever Jenny is presenting financial information to you guys throughout the year, she's bringing good information. So that can be relied upon, uh, by you all or by a third party. Second part of the audit, uh, is what is called a, a yellow book audit. Um, it's usually the focus of, uh, findings, like whenever there is a finding, that's where it is from is that part of the audit. So in that part of the audit, what we do is we come in and we do, uh, not so much of a, not so much of an evaluation of your all's internal controls, but we actually look at your all's internal controls over the financial reporting that are in place and see if those are good policies and if they are good policies, if they're actually operating effectively. And how you can determine if they are operating effectively is if there is any problems, which problems do arise, uh, that they are detected and corrected on a timely basis. Um, the, the second part of that audit is to determine if the school district complied with laws and regulations and grant agreements, um, which Rock Castle County School District did. Uh, so there are no findings in the audit, which is typical to be in of the Rock Castle County Schools. Third part is kind of the same audit, uh, as the, the yellow book audit, but it's called a single audit. It's the same processes, but it, it just applies to your all's major federal programs. Um, ESER is typically a major federal program. Uh, let me see if you have anybody else for sure. I think food service is kind of telling them that issue too. So yes, the food service and then the ESER ones were your all's two major federal programs. Uh, they're working on findings in regards to those either. Um, and finally, uh, in school districts, one of the big things that we see is that there's findings at the school level. So, um, this year they're working on findings from the schools. Uh, that's something that you guys have been, I'd approve them on continuously. I know, I think it was there in the twenty-two years, we lost money in to actually help throughout the year review that. So that is working, uh, for you guys, so. Uh, in summary, you know, everything looks real good and it was a pleasure. Once again, get the other questions. So I'm, I'm here to answer them.
I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Phillips and Ms. Jenny and our bookkeepers at the school levels because we have worked tirelessly to reduce any findings at the school level. And thanks to the work that Mr. Philip has, Phillips has done with our bookkeepers and Ms. Jenny leading that. This is the first year that I can, I was trying to think today, I think this is my eleventh year of either sitting on this board or being employed at Rock Castle County Schools and getting an audit report. And this is the first year that I can ever recall that we've had zero findings at a school. And Ms. Jenny can speak to that more, but to our bookkeepers that have worked so hard and Mr. Phillips and Ms. Jenny, thank you, thank you, thank you, because that's just really, really important and I'm proud of the work you all have done.
Um, I've served on this board almost twenty years and this is the first time there, there's been zero findings in twenty years. I'm confident. So, and thank you.
We're not easy either. It was all on them. They did a very good job.
Well, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
I do have a question, Ms. Jenny. Are all of our boosters, everything, it's district-wide, everything goes through?
Everything is in the school activity account.
Okay. I was, I was going to ask that. I was looking at this one page. I guess I was kind of mistakenly, misread it maybe. But I can talk to you later about it.
Yes. So that's something that, excuse me, our schools have really worked hard on. Um, and that's a continual process to monitor. So they continually work on that throughout the year.
Mr. Phillips has implemented a, a plan. He's going into schools regularly and working with bookkeepers and working with principals and, and helping them work through the process to make sure that, that this audit is clean. So very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for bringing this good report.
Thank you.
Thanks. With that being said, we need a motion to approve the audit that has been presented to us tonight. All in favor?
Yes.
Item six D, a review and approve the twenty-four, twenty-five board representative to serve on the district calendar committee.
So you all know this is a yearly, uh, obligation that we have to set the calendar for next school year. It's hard to think twenty twenty-five, but we'll be here before we know it. So, um, in twenty eighteen, the legislature changed, um, or mandated the process for calendar committee. So, um, I've shared with you a document there of all the members that, that, uh, statute requires, parents, community members, administrators, it does require a board member. Um, so this begins the process. Once the board approves, uh, selects your, whoever, which of you all want to serve on that, then we will, uh, we'll meet. Um, I do plan to meet, uh, next week, early one, one day, uh, to look over some options and then we'll meet again before our January meeting, uh, after we, after the committee obtains feedback from all of the, the representative groups there. Um, and then at the January board meeting, um, the committee will make a recommendation, um, based on the options. And then at the February meeting, uh, the board will select the calendar, uh, or vote on the calendar that they would like to adopt for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So we need one of you all to decide or you all to decide which one of you wants to.
Well, I think the newbies on the board should really be the ones to, uh, step up.
What about Ms. Anna? Ms. Anna, do you still want to do it?
She just took a dive in the pool.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I couldn't stop thinking, I would love to.
Thank you, Anna.
With that being said, we, we need to vote to approve Ms. Anna as the board representative to serve on the district calendar committee.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep. You got it, Anna.
Mr. Ripper?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item sixteen, review and approve the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar committee.
So we'll need you now, we'll add Ms. Anna's name on there and we'll need you all to, uh, to approve the entire, uh, committee there.
Make a motion.
All right. All in favor? Motion carries. Six F, review and approve the workers' compensation employers' liability insurance calendar year of twenty twenty-four. Ms. Jenny?
Yes, you have, um, information in your, in your drive, um, and the proposal from Howchin's Insurance Group, um, for our workers' comp, um, policy for the upcoming year. This policy does run from January to December. The provider is Kentucky Employers Mutual Insurance, as it has been in the past. The quote presented is twelve thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars less than the prior year. That is a cost savings due to the excellent, um, safety measures implemented, um, not only by district staff, but across our schools. Um, so we have an excellent rating of, um, safety for our employees. And, and that's, uh, certainly something to be celebrated. And as a result, uh, we have significant cost savings. So our, our policy again, um, for the year would be forty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents.
Ms. Jenny, I have a question.
Sure.
Are they the only people that offers workers' comp? I mean, I've never heard of anybody else. I was just.
So Howchin's Insurance Group, um, obtains quotes, um, on our behalf and, um, many, uh, insurance providers no longer, you know, are, are competitive in this market. And Kimmy has been the most competitive.
And he's the only one I can remember.
And as you may recall, we've, we've discussed dividends. Um, because we had been with them for a number of years, we are still receiving some dividends, um, from past performance.
Luke, you had me at twelve thousand dollars.
Second.
You have a first, that need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Item six G, review and approve the bid for the Rock Castle County High School ADA improvements in paving project, BG two-four dash zero nine seven. We're going to ask the board to table G and H, but I'm going to let Mr. Trent provide some update for that.
Okay, so, um, yesterday afternoon, a couple of the bidders called and asked for, for additional time to prepare bid. Um, because of the way we're doing it, you know, it's, those are smaller projects. And there were some things that they were comfortable with. They wanted to do some course sampling at Mount Vernon Elementary to see how much, uh, area that they might have to excavate to, to get back to solid ground. And at the high school, one of the bidders was worried about rock. I think they've worked over it forward. We got plenty of those, so, um, it won't affect any kind of construction timelines. Everything's going to be done in the summer more likely anyway. So we, we, we would like to allow them a couple more weeks to get a bid, get a good bid together. We think we'll get more bids and, uh, have some better bidder competition as well.
Well, with that being said, uh, I guess we do not need a motion to table it or do we need a motion to table it?
We would need a motion.
Need a motion?
I move to table.
Motion, first and second? All in favor? Same thing, did H need a motion to table that also?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor? Item seven, review the superintendent's personnel action report. If you have any questions, you can ask Dr. Ballinger about that. Item eight, your department reports are all uploaded. If you have any questions, you can go to the individuals, unless anyone would like to share something. And I'm not trying to cut you off. If you would, we'd love to have you share.
I would like to share something. It's another good news, uh, report. Um, as you know, we worked tirelessly on our FEMA, um, application and, um, we had, you know, received, um, about seventy-eight thousand dollars from FEMA. We did appeal their decision to deny, um, a little over a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars of the costs that we had expended. We felt like that we had done due diligence in, um, spending funds that were specific to, um, COVID response and protective measures. As a result, we did receive an additional twenty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Um, I'm, I'm just a little sad. If it had just been about two hundred dollars more, we would have received over a hundred thousand dollars. But we're just slightly short of a hundred thousand dollars from FEMA. Again, um, it was great work that our entire team did to respond during COVID and we felt like that, um, that we responded in a way that met the guidelines that FEMA set forth for us. Therefore, it was important to us to, um, to, you know, continue to, um, obtain those funds in revenues for our school district. So we're just shy of a hundred thousand dollars.
Ms. Jenny, that all work is all you. You have stuff with it.
I bet she gives them every day.
So, yes, I think Ms. Jenny needs a shirt or something that says FEMA. Because she did not give up on that. So thank you. A hundred dozen dollars is a long way in our budget, so it's.
That was a lot of styrofoam.
It was. It was. Um, our most recent, um, funding, uh, reimbursement was for, um, kind of the paper towels and the cleaning supplies that we use. And, um, as FEMA and COVID has still evolved, they have continued to change some of their, what is allowable. So, um, we fell into another category and, um, it was worth the time to take that appeal, so.
Thank you, Ms. Jenny. Next on our, is superintendent communication.
I'm just going to be really, um, brief, but I did want to say that, um, we went to a training last, last, at the end of last week. Um, several of us in our district office team and our middle school and high school teams went for our new community school grant through the Pritchard Committee. Ms. Angie went with us as, um, a hospital representative and really excited about what this is going to mean for the middle school and high school and how impactful this grant is going to be. Again, it's five years, one point five million dollars and really the lot of possibilities for impacting families and kids in our community. So just really, really excited about that. Do you want to add anything?
Oh, it's going to be great. Yeah. The community, just get ready because we need to, and it's going to be fun. It's going to be good.
It is going to be fun.
Yeah.
It's always exciting when, when you have the resources to do the things that you're trying to do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Changes everything.
It's going to be exciting.
Uh, we have board comments. Matt, do you have any?
Tuesday before Thanksgiving, I got to go help with Kenneth's Kitchen. That was wonderful. Hats off to all the folks at Mount Vernon for making that happen, especially Ms. Regina and her family, who I'm sure served completely voluntarily, Brandon. But also all, many of you all were there. It's amazing. Uh, principals and staff taking food and so forth. So appreciate that a bunch. And I just want to say how much we appreciate Dr. Ballinger and all the other people who worked on the Thanksgiving, uh, evacuation and process. It's just amazing how quick that happened and how well that all worked. And, um, we would have come and helped if you'd let us, but, but we appreciate everybody that made that happen and just actually had buses taking Thanksgiving food and that sort of thing. It's amazing and what a blessing.
And I'll speak to the Kenneth's Kitchen, talk about our community schools that we're getting ready to do. We've already got a leg up. I mean, Kenneth's Kitchen is a community event and it's related with our schools. So it's kind of neat to see we've been doing the work that we're now getting rewarded for. And we're going to keep on doing that and moving it forward, so. It's a great school system. We're pretty, pretty lucky here.
So. I just want, I'm going to read, I won't look at anybody because y'all know I'm a crier anyway, so. This evening on December 14th, I'm announcing my school board resignation. After serving for four and a half years, I leave filled with gratitude. Rock Castle County Schools include staff members who genuinely care about kids, parents who stand up for what they believe is best for their kids, and a community that wants to make a difference. During COVID, I witnessed the school district and community do what no one else did. A team of people ensured that children received meals every day that were not in school. It wasn't just a, a bag meal to pick up at school, but a hot meal delivered to stations all over the county. And to some who did not have a way to get it, it was delivered to their home. There was no title or position during that process, only a team that spent hours of unpaid time because they cared about kids. And this makes me grateful to live in a community like this. And we can deal with that with the, with all of the trains. To Dr. Ballinger, I've worked with and known leaders over the past 20 years, and I would put you at the top of the list. It's not uncommon for a leader to strive to take their organization to be the best. It's not unusual for a leader to lead with heart and passion. However, it is uncommon for a leader to have both, and you have both. And I'm grateful that you are our leader, and I cannot wait to see the great things that you lead Rock Castle County Schools to accomplish. To the staff, I hope that you have felt my support. Working in a school system, I know the impact that you make on lives of children. Just a couple of days ago, my nephew told me how much his lunch lady made a difference in his day at the middle school. Every board of education employee, every principal, teacher, bus driver, cafeteria server, janitor, parish counselor, every staff member can give hope to a child, no matter their position, and I want you to know that I see you and I appreciate you. To my board members, it has been a pleasure to serve with you. I'm leaving on a great note, knowing that the members here truly want the best for our kids. I have grown personally and professionally as we agreed to disagree, make tough decisions, learn together and stand together. And I'm grateful to know each of you and to call you friend. Um, to the parents and our community, I love to see that you stand for what you believe is best for our children and our district. And school districts are here to serve the community and impact generations to come. And your voice matters. I've been a student, a parent, an employee in other districts, and now a board member here. And hear me when I say that we have the best at Rock Castle County Schools. You don't know what you don't know. And before becoming a board member, I didn't think that there was much to running a school system. And I thought board members made really good money, but neither is true. So, uh, we have no idea what goes on behind the scenes to make a great district. And your board members, they volunteer many hours. So I ask you to have grace as you stand for what you think is best. Your concerns are valuable to be heard, but so are the good things. And I'm grateful for the parents and the community who care. So I will end by saying thank you to all. Being a board member is not for the faint of heart, but you all have shown me support, answered many questions, and helped me grow in more ways than you will ever know. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve in this position. And Rock Castle County Schools will always have a special place in my heart. So thank you. I didn't cry, I made it.
Missy, I'll, I'll be the first to say how valuable you have been and how much we're going to miss you. And you are always a voice of reason. And you are always, um, you, you have an open mind and a loving heart. And you're willing to listen. You're the most excellent listener. And you, you are able to listen to both sides of an issue, and you're always able to find common ground, and, and that's a skill and a talent. And we've appreciated you very much and thank you for your service. We're very much going to be missed.
Yes.
I'm not so sure I want to take that. That's why we did that. I would just like to say that, um, it has been a true pleasure in receiving you as a friend. Because I did not know you before we started serving together. And, um, you have a passion and a compassion for others. And, um, I know where that comes from. It comes from your faith and, um, I call you my sister in Christ, and I like you. But, um, I still don't want to share, but that's okay. The other thing I would like to say, um, is, uh, somebody's got a big seat to fill.
Yes.
Somebody's got a big seat to fill. Uh, and I know that you deeply care for our kids. And it's always about the kids. With everybody that serves on this board, it's about the kids. And that big check every month. Maybe we should advertise that. I would like to say before we adjourn, uh, I appreciate all of you. There's, there's really not enough words. There's not enough things. But I'm sure you got a little bitty glimpse tonight when these little kids were right here in the center of what it's all about. And, uh, I appreciate you, so thank you. Merry Christmas to you. I pray many blessings for your family for the next year. So with that, need a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor? You should be.